I'm going to call the June 16th regular meeting, 17:00 PM. Please stand. And our communication is going to be led by Pastor Shawn and following that, the other two regents.
Lord, we are gathered here to do important work. It has been a trying couple of months for everyone in this room. We pray your blessing, your peace, and your wisdom on everyone assembled here, that thoughts and opinions may be shared freely and openly, and that we may do so without ranker or animosity, but in love and humility to everyone. That is what your son taught us to do. It is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Upon the allegiance and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Trucca.
Yocum.
Here.
Hope.
President.
All set.
Here.
Before you, you have minutes from June 2nd, 2020 regular meeting. Need a motion to accept?
Accept.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Also, you have the minutes from June 8th, public hearing. Need a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All opposed in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Also, minutes from June 8th, special meeting. Need a motion to accept?
I need to, Mr. President, amend those minutes.
From a special meeting?
Yes. I come to my attention that you didn't excuse Candy Yocum. She was home with a daughter that had needed her assistance. And I would like to amend that, that I made a motion to excuse her for that.
Need a second to amend the motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And then we need a motion to accept the new minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Communications and positions.
Yes, we have two letters here. The first one is from Woodlong United Methodist Church. It is addressed to the Ucires City Plating Committee, dated June 11th of 2020. I am writing this letter on behalf of the Woodlong United Methodist Church, 1675 Hopley Avenue, concerning the proposed zoning reclassification. It is our desire as a congregation to be included in the zoning request by Ohio Mutual, thanks to Dave Keats, Administrative Council Chair. And the second communication is addressed to Ucires City Council, dated June 15th. It is regarding the May 21st, 2020 Special Ad hoc Committee Council Rules of Procedure Meeting. At the June 2, 2020, it is from Bicky DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Ucires. At the June 2, 2020 council meeting, my letter setting forth my concern that a violation of the Open Meetings Act was done at the May 21st, 2020 Special Ad hoc Committee Council Rules of Procedure Meeting was read. The May 21st, 2020 Special Committee Meeting Notice set forth that it was for the limited purpose of considering a draft ordinance amending Ucires Formans Chapters 111 and 113. However, discussion was also held in Resolution 219, 2020 pertaining to the state program and the nearest emergency declaration pertaining to the coronavirus pandemic. In response to my letter, Law Director Rattler stated that discussion at the special meeting of the topic outside of parameters of what was advertised was a technical violation of FEST. For clarification purposes and confirmation of my concern, attached is a copy of the Ohio Open Meetings Act 2020 manual document setting forth that, quote, "When a public body holds a special meeting to discuss particular issues, the statement of the meeting's purpose must specifically indicate those issues, and the public body may only discuss those specified issues at that meeting. Discussing matters at a special meeting that were not disclosed in the notice of purpose, either an open session or executive, is a violation of the Open Meetings Act." Bicky, on the shot of 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Ucires. And on the back you'll see attached is a section of the Ohio Open Meetings Act from Shepard. Both these letters need to be accepted in line.
Need a motion to accept in file.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
I also want to throw in the comment, thank you to the gentleman from Woodlong United Methodist for letting us know their point on that resoning. We very much appreciate that.
Okay, granting permission for visitors to speak. Does anybody want to speak, visitors? Non-Stating Committee reports. Mr. McKeever.
Ucires City Council Joint Regular Committee Meeting met Thursday, June 4th, 2020, from 6 o'clock to 6:55 PM. Members present, myself, James V., Bruce Trucca, Doug Pope, Lisa Alsa, Kevin Myers, and Candice Rippon-Paxton. Ucires City Joint Regular Committee Meeting was called ordered by I, myself, at 6:00 PM. Public participation, Deanna Williams, 122 Kincora Drive, said she and many of her neighbors had concerns about the planned development there because residents there are contractually obligated to keep the residence in a similar color and style. She said she and her neighbors support the rezoning provided. The contractual obligation applies to all, to the new homes as well. Number three, Order of Committee Business, Plating Committee, met from 6:04 to 6:40 PM on the Kincora rezoning proposal. I won't read the entire document, it's quite lengthy. But it was on the Kincora Drive rezoning proposal. The city planning commission approved of this on May 19th, and sent it to the council, which went to the Plating Committee to change Kincora Drive from apartment residential AR to urban neighborhood residential R3, which is changing it from a planned unit development for condominiums to a single home development. We had lengthy discussions on this. And we talked about the sewer line that's there. And then McKeever from McKeever Associates explained about that sewer. And we have this referred to, the rezoning, the plan, a plating public hearing meeting on Monday, July 13th at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And I adjourned at 6:40 PM.
Anybody have any questions for Plating Committee? Health, Safety, and Fitness, Myers.
While I was not present, I did watch everybody's debate. That's a form of signification. According to these minutes, you discussed the street closures. A letter from the FOP asking for the street closures for the re-scheduled car show for September 5th. Trucca made a motion to request legislation, seconded by me, and then passed by a voice vote, and they cut from 6:40 to 6:43 PM.
Anybody have any questions for Health, Safety, and Fitness? We got the, in our committee, the civil service testing. Is that you discussing your committee?
Yeah, safety and health, safety and finance.
Since everybody's here except for Bruce, I attended a civil service meeting. It was a couple Mondays ago, I think. And I asked the, I started telling them about what we had going on with that in the committee, about wanting to keep an up-to-date list. And they thought that was a great idea, and they said they would love to see us have them do that. They said that they can't have the list, they said, until they get a letter from the Safety Service Director per Ohio Vice Code. So, hearing that, and they said, they also said that, they said, "Call them anytime you want to talk to them." But they acted like they thought it'd be a great idea if we passed an ordinance mandating that we always have that civil service test up to an active list to hire on. Sounds like if we pass an ordinance stating that that the administration will be obligated to send that letter then to them that they need.
It's in the open projects.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to tell everybody while I'm here after I went to that meeting at all. Public lands building, Mr. Yocum.
It started at 6:44 PM. Mark McKeever, Dr. Trucca, Doug Pope, they're present. Shine's Art Park Security Proposal was talked about first. Council received a letter from Council President, Hank Houser, of American Communications, offering to donate high-definition security cameras and surveillance to protect the area of Shine's Art Park. He had attached to the letter, attached with the letter, a document from the Ohio Ethics Commission stating that Council President is entitled to services as long as he receives no financial benefit from doing so. McKeever made a motion to accept the donation, seconded by Trucca, and motion passed by a voice vote. I would also like to say thank you, Council President. That's a very good thing to do. Number two was the water bonus station. The acting chair noted that he recently spoke to the service safety director about Horizon's efforts to fix the antenna at the station, which has kept the station from working recently. Hank Houser observed that the old station operated with a keypad, which users with access to pay for their water wondered if there is a way to integrate a keypad and a mechanism to pay by credit card. Lynn McKeever of McKeever Associates, the consulting engineer for the city, said the flow of the station is currently 125 gallons per minute, and there's a plan to try to increase that flow. The old tank was 35 feet lower in elevation and had more pressure. Hank Houser asked how much money the city is losing in credit card fees at the station. Pope noted that anyone wanting to see the station can reach out to the water distribution team leader, John Ernstberger. Matters also been referred to the Service Committee. And Trucca, who chairs that committee, noted that he would like to have a committee meeting at the station. The matter will also remain an open project to the Public Plans and Buildings Committee. About recess, the Public Plans and Buildings Committee at 6:54.
Anybody have any questions for Public Lands and Building? Non-Traffic Commission, Mr. Mayor.
No report tonight, sir. We'll have a lot of minutes from the next meeting.
When's the next meeting?
At the next council meeting. We'll have minutes to be read for the next council meeting. We have approved minutes from last week at the meeting, but they didn't get finished typed up in time.
Is there a traffic commission between now and next council meeting?
We just had one last week.
Okay. What's the status on that alley that's closed down there?
We're reaching out to, we have heard back in Proger regarding moving the concrete barrier just to the, slightly to the east, so let's see, that's a possibility. That's what we're waiting for.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions for Traffic?
I don't for Traffic, but I did have one question for the mayor. Have you heard anything about the State Board of Health and when they're going to come and inspect the pool?
Yeah, I could talk about that during the report.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
I guess we need a motion and accept all the committee minutes related to the reports, electorally. Seven.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Report of city officers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. The First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States was on full display on June 6th, and some of you were there. We had about approximately 200 people peacefully gathered at Millennium Park to protest racism. The age group in attendance was from 1 to about 100 years of age. It was organized by local folks, and the majority of the folks attending were local citizens. They marched from City Hall to Liberty Street and turned around and came back. That was peaceful as expected. We thank everyone who took part, made their voices heard. A special thank you to our peace officers that were present. And they were there in force to protect citizens and property if needed. Nothing that weren't needed, but it was good they were there. Captain Greathouse was in charge of security. Many meetings during the week with area police departments, the Ohio State Patrol, Crawford County Sheriff's Office during the week, coordinating security and positions. Very grateful for all the support we received from the county departments and, of course, from our own department. And our country has a little ways to go, obviously. It's, since I was born, 1954, that was the year of Topeka, Brown versus Topeka Board of Education, which was a landmark decision regarding education. Still, much work needs to be done in our homes, our city, in our country. As I said in the media interviews, all citizens must be treated with dignity and respect. This is the key to a peaceful community. And I ask that you, as city leaders, speak out against racism when you see it in our community. Do not tolerate it in any form. And we congratulate Chief Kepke. We retired Friday. Some of you were there at his reception on City Hall porch. He's leaving to head up the department at North Central State College. It's a perfect job for him, where he can influence young, future police officers. Just was a nice day, very nice day for everybody. I got a proclamation from, a nice letter from Congressman Jordan, and a very nice letter and proclamation from Larry Householder, who was delivered by Reardon McLean. I know he was very appreciative of that. Work is complete on the pool repairs, so I'll address that now, Candace, if you're ready.
Sorry, just ahead.
And we reached out, left a message with the state inspector on Monday. And we asked him to be here Friday for the final inspection. And that's what we're waiting for right now. And I know, just listening to news reports, they're down a couple people through budget crunches at the state level, and we're hoping to get here Friday, when then we have to reach out to Crawford County Board of Health. It's all coming down to the inspections right now. It's, we had the electrical inspection from Ridgefield County, that went well. It's holding water, it's fixed, and we're ready to go. We're ready to go.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask what the hours are going to be?
We're going to, we're going to, there's been some debate because we are, you know, required to have the mandatory changes due to the Board of Health. And the biggest one is limiting the number of people. So we have to limit it to 150 people. Swimmers are not, and you have to keep people, everyone's six feet apart, except for family members. We toyed with the idea of having split sessions. I think we're coming now, but we're just going to have regular hours. We'll be open from 1 to 8. And we get to 150, we just wait, and then they can wait outside until some leave, and we'll let everyone in. Sundays will be 1 to 6, so I know it's been a challenge.
One to 8 during the week?
Mm-hmm.
I know a lot of parents ask me.
Yes, 1 to 8, and we're ready to go. It's, we'll have a baby pool open for the first time in many years, too, so.
And 1 to 6 on Sundays?
1 to 6 on Sundays, yes. The passes that we sold last year are good this year. And so we want to make sure everybody is happy, and as we are. I'm trying to talk to Mr. Wagner, and being the first person to go down the slide, we'll see if that goes, so. Does that answer, Candace, your question?
I have another question, is there going to be concession standards?
Yes. We haven't bought anything yet. As soon as we firm up the inspection, we're going to go and fill it up. We've got, we've still, we've got almost everybody hired. I'm very fortunate there. And I've still got a couple, I think there's two people, two lifeguards. We interviewed some today. This next report may be slightly out of date, so. And that's it?
Mr. Myers.
Mr. Mayor, I had asked at a previous meeting, we were talking about the pool, if you guys would look at the pass for the family size, has that been discussed? Or?
The families, no, we haven't discussed it. We're just, we'll discuss it at the end of the year for next year. I got your good points, but we don't want to have to put, change any rules after, of course, being closed last year. Let's just get everyone in there and get them swimming and.
I understand. I would appreciate you taking a good, strong look at that over the off-season.
Yeah, we will, we will. It's under consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I've been asked to ask you, when can, you reserve that for a party?
Oh, they're, they're, no.
They can, who do they need to call?
Call Kelly up here, yeah, yeah. So the parties, yeah, parties are typically in the evening.
Correct, that's when they want to happen.
They couldn't call right now.
Okay.
And the parties will certainly be expected to maintain social distancing and follow the instructions. We'll have signs up, and, you know, we'll be doing everything that's required by the State Board of Health. We ask everybody to have patience. Thank you.
Well, did I read something in a news article that said that concrete had failed over the winter?
We had a couple spots in the deep end that did, you know. And that had to be, that sort of slowed it down a little bit, and we had to.
Was that warranty work, or?
The concrete that was, I believe it was, I believe, I have to check into it just to see for sure.
Okay, anybody got any last questions from Mayor?
Thanks for sticking to it, and sticking along.
You know, I know, it's, you know, we want to get on.
Safety Service Director, you're informed.
Jeff's report, Dirt Dog are the group that's obviously working out on Hopley. Their plan is to start the restoration in June for all three projects. That means they're going to put dirt in, grass, and then do the street repairs. We continue work with our engineer on the Pines Reservoir Project. Everything's on course. The breach is scheduled for mid-July, and Dirt Dog is, will be the one doing that work also. And I think we're waiting for one thing from ODNR yet on that, just final approval on that. Am I right, Mr. Rattler?
Yeah.
The asset management plan, we will be submitting our plan to the EPA by June 30th. There's what they require to, but, you know, it's just a lot of bookwork. Pickleball courts, I don't know if anybody's been out to park, but they have been a smash hit. And we've received a lot of calls complimenting the courts, and we are considering, since, we had 17 people waiting to play today. So we've, we're contemplating putting some more courts in this year yet, so. Utility bills, the pass due, maybe some of you know, but Governor has allowing us now to shut off water, and I think July 10th is the date. And we're putting a plan together to address those folks that haven't paid anything or have to get them caught up as soon as possible. We don't anticipate turning anybody off that date. We don't want to turn anyone off. But we need to reach out to everybody and let them know that there will be a day that water will be shut off. And we ask everybody who might be in that situation to call up to the utility office, and let's see if we can work out a plan, get you caught up. A bid opening for Mill and Pave is tomorrow, tomorrow at 10:00 AM right here. And the UV piece of equipment for the wastewater treatment plant will be next, excuse me, two weeks at 10:00 AM right here. If you live out in Plymouth Street area, as I do, there was some replacement done. And a lot of black streaks out there. I'm not too happy with the way it was done, but it's, it's done.
I seen him doing it when I was going up and fixing the duplex up there.
Considered finished?
That's finished, yeah. That's finished, that's, I'm going to reach out to ODOT and
Thank you.
see what's, what can be done about that. There's a couple things up there that I'm not very happy about, and that's one of them. But that's an ODOT project, so we had nothing really to do with it, with the exception of paying her 20%. As we said earlier, we've got a couple more lifeguards. So if you know anybody that wants to apply, just have them drop up the City Hall, get an application. And the garbage pickup, you got, Kate, you got a job? Can you swim? Can you tread water?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, you're hired.
I have two jobs.
The July 4th holiday will be observed on Friday, July 3rd. So city offices will be closed that day.
Enjoy the fireworks that night.
The fireworks, you want to talk about that in a minute, probably. So the Friday pickup will be on Thursday, and then Monday will be as normal, so. City Hall offices are closed that day. And I think that's it for Jeff's report.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can we withhold payment on the 20% until they actually?
Oh, no, that's been paid. It's been paid, a long time ago.
They take their money before they do their work.
Oh, yeah, that money goes upfront.
A quick comment, real quick, Mr. President. Kudos to our water and street departments. They had a ruptured water line at the intersection of Lucas and Sandusky Street on the east side of the street, right there, in between High Mylar and actually my office.
Yes.
This is probably about a month ago. Saturday, as I was leaving, I noticed that somehow it had sunk, almost probably about six, eight inches. I called John Ernstberger to let him know, being it was a water issue. He called Jeff Dunn, it was repaired in probably within 30 minutes. And it was paved over, and smoothed over, and flattened, and.
I'll pass that one. They're an excellent group. This year's especially tough for them because of the furbos, you know, to save money, they're not working 32 or 36 hours. And there's, the grass continues to grow. And there's a lot of issues that, you know, that are out there, need to be done. So they're doing a great job, I think. They're really, starts up at the top there with Mr. Dunn and Mr. Ernstberger, all supervisors.
Mr. Myers.
Is there any update on the Holland Park and FEMA concession stand?
Mr. Rattler, you want me to take it, or you want to take it?
No, I can take it. I actually been working with FEMA and ODNR today, and we're talking about the staff and forth. We're waiting on ODNR's approval of the changes we made and the plans. FEMA's on board, they're, they're content.
FEMA's already approved of the ODNR schedule.
Yeah, so we're waiting on ODNR approval. We expect that to take place. We did have a mid-July completion date, but due to the amount of time that ODNR's going to need to review some of the ordinances, I talked to FEMA today, and they're, you know, they're happy that we're moving forward. So they're, they're, you know, let us, you know, move it out a month or so to, which probably isn't happening.
Thank you.
And one more thing, Kelly wanted me to mention, not to forget to mention that tomorrow, we're having a blood drive at the Red Cross at the Knights of Columbus Hall on Poplar Street at noon. There's still about 13 slots. The blood supply is critically low because of the COVID virus. So if you, it's going to be hard to give some blood. I'll be there at noon giving blood.
Might be full of chicken grease, but.
Yeah, that's all right.
I'll be cooking chickens on one of the Quanis parks.
Okay. Well, next time, we'll have another one, I'm sure, so. Tomorrow, 12 to 6 at the Knights, if you want to sign up, just call Kelly in the morning.
What's going on in the alley there, recycling trailer? Have you got problems with trash?
Well, not anymore than we've had in the past. People just, when they get full, they just feel like it's okay to dump, and they just dump. So that, we have to pick that up and throw it in our dumpster, so.
Is that the second trailer that's out there now?
Yes, that might be.
It's full.
Yes.
The first one filled up three hours.
Yeah, this is full. And there was a lady unloading a car when I pulled in. And I asked her what she was.
We're trying to make sure everybody knows you can't dump your trash and.
While I know the trailers aren't ours, for that particular one that sits there, is there a way that we could talk to the county and maybe come up with an agreement on some signage that we could put up there?
Yeah.
That says, number one, you know, put stuff where it says, number two, if it's full. full, don't put stuff on the ground, come back later.
Well, it's not just that, it's, it's contamination. I don't know if you saw the post on Facebook?
I did, I did. You know, and that's a whole nother issue that's, you know, but for our sake, it's setting of the stuff on the ground seems to be problematic for us.
Especially on a windy day.
So, maybe if we could, as a city, put up a little bit of signage there?
Sure.
Then would...
We've talked about that.
I think that now's a great time for that.
We have...
Or cameras.
Or both, or both.
I'm just saying, I think, no.
Well, what's, maybe we should look into some other kind of way to recycle, like put some bigger dumpsters out at the Irving Street facility and then people can just pull up there and...
Is there a way to pull up and leave their cars out? I mean, the facility?
Well, that's, it's, it's a county project, not a city project, so anything has to go through solid waste district.
Could they go to the county where, I mean...
Well, we talked earlier in the meeting about putting just large dumpsters out there and then, and then we get carted to, the landfill that gets sorted there. That, I think, is in the plan. COVID kind of changed everything, so because of furloughs and less staff, contamination, they took up, they took all the trailers off and then because there was so, so much demand for them, they brought it back, you know, this week. So, yeah, there's changes there. Recycling is expensive, it's not free, you know, it's, the more we recycle, the more it costs. Nobody wants the stuff, you gotta hire people to, to sort it, you know, so, you know, it's a noble thing, but there's a, there's a significant cost, kind of like garbage, you know, which is about $800,000 a year. Recycling probably wouldn't be quite that much, but you gotta hire staff, you might be a $400,000, $500,000 a year budget.
Across the city of Maryland.
Aren't we paying something every ton of trash that gets dumped at the landfill? Isn't there like a dollar a ton or something?
Yeah, we have, yeah, but again, that's, it's, 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 the issue is, they have a budget, they have revenue to meet, so if we don't drop a single pound of trash there, we're still going to have to pay $250,000. You know, that's what, that's what revenue they require from the city, roughly. And you can recycle all you want, we're still going to be, they're gonna, they're gonna, the solid waste district has debts that they have to service and they need X amount of revenue. It's just like the Water Department, you meet for a water plant, we have a budget of about $4 million a year that we need to meet. So if everybody quit drinking water, you know, let's say one person drinks one gallon of water, they would be paying $4 million for that water, so you see my point? This, you know, you, you, you have certain revenue obligations that you have to meet and that's the issue with the landfill because of the debt on it. It's also the issue with the water plant, water treatment plant that we have, so.
Once we meet the obligation of our expenses on water, can we sell excess water to Northern Ohio at a cheaper rate then?
The rate that they gave us was, didn't even cover.
The $2.85 per 1,000 gallons, $2.85?
It was, it was like two tenths of one cent per gallon. Over the year, we figured out we'd make about $5,000 and for the wear and tear on all our machinery, it just wasn't, you know... It was, it was ridiculously low. And I, and I, other cities have, you know, signed contracts with them, that's fine, but it just didn't make any sense. They, they, they offered, they offered...
Well, the plant manager told me we can produce water above what our citizens use for an extra, like 20 cents per 1,000 gallons and if they're going to pay us $2.85, that's...
I, I just, I just said, we already figured it out. We were, the revenue that, for Sulphur Springs, that they were going to buy from us, we have, we would gross about, net about $5,000 a year and it just, there was nothing there. There was just nothing, there was just no, no point in doing it and locking yourself up.
Well, if you already figured it out, give me the, the detail.
Well, we did this two years ago, we already went through and put it to bed, so.
How do we get from recycling to water rates?
Any other questions for the Mayor? Mr. Radler?
Uh, number four, moving ahead on Friday, maybe it's Aragorn, sponsor of this week, this Friday, this Friday, at Dust, Dust Berry, over on there. Two referrals, one is kind of already in committee, but just going to kind of specify, that is our FEMA, our flood plain ordinance. We've been in communication with FEMA and our ordinance in a lot of places has been out of date, so Landon and I are trying to work through that and get that done. We're not ready to talk about it this Thursday, but officially we want that, get that on the agenda, but we're going to have to refer it tonight. The other is Sunville 310 at the state. The state requires us to, the feds apparently are requiring the villages and cities to pass a resolution saying that if we take any of the CARES Act money, that the feds and the states are going to disperse for current ours related expenses, that we agree to only spend that money on current ours related expenses. So we have to pass a resolution that says that. They have given us the exact language that they would like us to pass and we've changed it three times, it's the first time I've read it, and hopefully by Thursday, they'll have it pretty good and then by the Tuesday after, they'll have it dead on. But, yeah, we'll just keep changing it till we go down.
Okay. We need referrals for the financial payment for Sunville 310.
Still moved.
All in favor, say aye. I oppose. And FEMA flood plain, let's go under, you know, blading?
Is that just readdressed to get ours in line with theirs, kind of?
Well, yeah, in, in, in modernizing it, there's, there's parts of ours that haven't been touched in some of that, I think, so it's kind of dependent on the speed.
Still move?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. While we're, because this is probably a legal question. I was contacted by the farmer north of Arrowhead that the stormwater for Arrowhead, there's like a three-foot sized tile that goes right into his field and it just kind of goes into this kind of open area and I guess when it rains, it just rushes down his field and makes a big gully where the dirt just erodes away every time. He said just a little rain will make it happen. So I asked him, I said, well, does the city have easement to put that onto your field? And he doesn't think so.
How about it again?
Well, he thought that when Harder developed that, that, because Harder owned it all, that they were just gonna take care of it as they developed to the north and then the north, the development never happened, so it just kind of ended up being there.
And he still lives right there by that field. He lives right on that hill as you go down Kerstetter, right there on the right-hand side, that's where he lives.
But, um... I think that's an excellent, William Keever question.
Yeah.
You mean you're not prepared to answer that?
Well, the farmer, he thought that the right way to fix it would be to take a three-foot all the way to the river, because he said, I guess, he, he's got a six-inch tile that's taken what comes out of that three-foot tile, which is why it runs over and, you know, I don't know if he could legally cut us off and not take our water anymore if he doesn't get his issue resolved.
That develops, but it's...
Well, yeah, water flows and there's, you know, laws that are...
Well, what we, what we do at the golf course, though, didn't we get an easement or something for, for taking all that water down?
For stormwater. Gotcha.
Well, you can get with William Keever, Mr. Mayor.
1980, probably, I would say, is what I think that development started.
Yeah, I mean, with Steve, so...
That was not done by the city.
I know, it was probably annexed until, yeah.
If I, if I remember, I mean, we never had any call, complaints from Steve Harder about this. I don't know why they're coming up now. The guy bought that from Steve Harder, you know, is that what, he should have known where the water was flowing, right?
I don't know, he just called me this week and said, I want something done, it's ruining my field, that's all he said.
I think it's, I, I, you know, I'm not sure what's illegal, legal aspect for the city of Bussiris.
But after looking at the history of it and find out and what was going on in the subdivision and the platform.
I know some of the houses were built in 85, so I'm gonna guess it started in the early 80s or...
You should, I know, I don't know why he didn't research that ahead of time and know what, where the water goes.
Yeah. Anybody other, any questions for Long Director? Since the auditor's not here, can you read your letter?
I should report to council dated today. I have no referrals for this evening, but would like to let you know that I will no longer be attending council meetings unless there is something specific that I need to address. I'm available to meet my appointment during the week or by phone if anyone has questions. I will continue to provide monthly reports and updates as needed. My husband's health and family obligations prevent me from being present at all meetings. Also, our 2019 audit has been delayed by one month due to COVID-19 restrictions. We have emailed information as much as possible, but Karen and associate CPAs are scheduled to be here on site July 7, 8, and 9 to complete the audit and will need to use council chambers and the council coffee room. They will let in your favorite council meetings or committee meetings while they are here. I appreciate your understanding and look forward to working with all of you respectfully, Auditor Joyce Schiffer. And as she mentioned, she does have no referrals, she has no referrals.
We need a motion to accept the statement of cash position, be it an exer, for... Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And then treasurer's report, we already had this last week.
Well, that was just submitted, yes.
We got it. No police chief report, no fire chief report. We motion accept all city officers' reports. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Visitors input regarding standing or special committees, any of city officers, any visitors' input? Do we need a recess?
No.
Consideration of proposed legislation for the third time?
We have one resolution, resolution number 222-2020, authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bussiris, Ohio, to ban vehicular traffic, including bicycles, except authorized emergency personnel on Saturday, September 5, 2020, from 7:00 a.m. Eastern Daylight Time to 12:00 a.m. Midnight Eastern Daylight Time on East Swan Street for the food court, from 12:00 p.m. Eastern Daylight Time to 12:00 a.m. Midnight Eastern Daylight Time along Sandusky Avenue from Mary Street to Oakwood Avenue, as well as the 100 blocks of Mansfield Street and Washington Square, the 100 block of East and West Sun Tullier Streets, the 100 block of West Orange Street, and the 100 blocks of East and West Charles Streets respectively, allowing access by local traffic and safety service personnel to the alleys located between Wall Street and Sandusky Avenue, as well as the alleys between Poplar Street and Sandusky Avenue. In order that said streets may be utilized temporarily as a cruising with the custom and classic car show parade route for an expected 600 custom and classic automobiles, more or less, and to provide as well sufficient parking facilities for the public display of said automobiles. Said special event to be sponsored by the Fraternal Order of Police, Bussiris Lodge Number 68, must provide for and direct all signs needed to reroute state highways according to the directions of the Service Safety Director and Chief of Police. The Service Safety Director and Chief of Police are nearby authorized to make the necessary arrangements for the rerouting of affected traffic on both federal and state highways passing through separate areas to facilitate the orderly movement of traffic during the four-six time period through the city of Bussiris, Ohio, and that is referred to the Health and Safety Committee.
Need motion to accept that for a reading.
So...
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Refer, those will be referred back to originated committee, public participation, is there any general public that wants to present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time? Committee report on pending legislation.
Health and Safety Committee is favorable, resolution 222-2020, which is the car show street closures.
Need motion accept that report, so... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Consideration of proposed legislation for the third time?
We have one resolution, resolution number 221-2020, authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Bussiris, Ohio, to ban all vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorized emergency personnel for the 2020 Bussiris brought, resubstained, according to the schedule set forth herein. Further authorizing and directing the Chief of Police to make necessary arrangements for the rerouting of traffic on federal, state, local highways and roadways, and that went through the Public Lands and Buildings Committee, which did vote in favor of it, and that's all we have on that.
Need motion accept as a third reading?
Second.
William Keever, vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any public participation on the legislation that's been read for the third time? None. So we can have a vote on that, since it went through three readings.
We just did the first reading, our show, we're getting a vote on that prior.
We brought our specials for sure happening, right?
That's a good question. Probably.
We're gonna look close to streets anyways.
We're gonna remain healthy.
I'll be happy to...
We're just having our protest...
I'll be happy to talk to anyone who's by.
Okay, well, do I hear a motion then to adopt the resolution 221-2020?
Seven, second.
Keever?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Trucco? Yocum?
Yes.
Resolution number 221-2020 duly adopted. The car show, that was on first reading, doesn't need to be murdered, so we'll just hold it to that. Anybody else have any other motions for anything?
I have a question. If I have someone that calls me with complaints on unnecessary items being leaned up against fences and like mattresses, refrigerators, things like, where do I go with that?
So, we call Landon.
Landon? Okay, thank you. I just wasn't sure where to take that.
He'll refer it probably down.
But he's here in the building, so that's, he's the person to get a hold of.
Landon?
You can call Landon first.
Or you can call our office, too.
Okay.
We'll get it to Gordon then.
I feel bad about, I'm always calling City Service Director, there's got to be somebody else.
No, that's, we refer down. Unfortunately, it doesn't happen overnight, you have to send them letters and...
Does that mean we want to make any motions to do any reconsidering of things or anything like that from previous meetings?
Yeah, your Facebook post is good.
Okay. Unfinished business. A council member wanted to refer Crawford Partnership for Education and Economic Development, which is $50,000 that we pay every year, so I'm going to refer that to committee.
That's an open project that might...
College is already in there?
It can be brought up on this topic.
Tell us about the online training.
Yes, the, I believe, back on, in mid-March, four members of council, the three members in the council parliament, signed up for a new council level training offered by the OML in person down in Worthington, I believe. That was canceled, obviously, because of the virus and the purchase order that we had to take, that was for a hold. It is going forward as a webinar, a webinar in person, so the webinar, I forget the date, but I believe it is a work, a weekday during the day, I'm assuming that most people can't do that because they have a work schedule.
Is there a Saturday available?
No, it's, it's a webinar during the week, but you can, you can look at that webinar at any, at any time in your own, of your own choosing. So you don't have to be there live, you don't have to watch it live.
Oh, okay, so I can watch it the evening afterward?
And you can watch the installments, you can watch it live if you want. So I went ahead and went through with the purchase order. I, all of you will get individual emails by Friday, giving you all the details of when, where to, where to go to find it, and again, you can do this at your convenience.
Just has to be done during the week, you can't be done on Saturday.
It's just a webinar online and it is about eight hours, so you may not want to do it all at once, but you can bring it up and, you know, it's gonna be there for a while.
June 24th.
Sounds like a deal by a lot.
From nine to four, maybe, and you have to make sure you apply or...
Have to make sure you apply or push on like that.
Yeah, it's, it's all going forward. So you, you'll get emails and it's all been taken care of. Just when you get your emails, if you want to watch it at your own convenience, go ahead and do so, because we wait.
So if I want to watch two hours on Monday, I can watch two hours on Tuesday?
Sure.
Okay.
So we'll sign up that way we have.
It's all done. You'll get an email, a link, and just go from there.
He signed you up already.
Yeah.
We're done. All we gotta do is.
Watch.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask for a referral to Health and Safety in regards to support of our police force. I can talk more about it on Thursday.
Okay, uh, we have a motion to refer a resolution supporting the police department to Health and Safety Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Got another question, Mr. President. Did we formally adjust our schedule to go around National Night Out yet, or had we not made that adjustment? Has it been moved?
Right. We typically don't do that until the meeting before the event. Just everyone's scheduled a little more, a lot by then. As you know, it's been postponed until October, so the meeting before that date, we can arrange to move that.
Hey, I had a resolution that I think, I don't know, might need to go into committee, but, um, just so we can get ahead of this thing in case we got our veto coming down the line. But a resol, resolution to accept the safer grant, I'd like to see that put into committee just so it can go through three readings and not have to be emergency and then not have to be subject to a deadline because of a veto. So does anybody want to entertain putting that into committee?
So moved. Accepting.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
So that's, how many in favor?
Three to two.
Three to two, okay.
Four to two.
Which committee are we talking about?
Uh, what was the committee that it went into for the.
Health and.
Health and Finance.
But we're talking about just accepting.
Private finance, if you ask. City offices closed for Independence Day on July third. Fireworks. Do you want to tell us something about that, Mr. Foote?
Come out and enjoy the fireworks on July third. They'll start around dusk. Usually we fire off a single shell about fifteen minutes before we start to give everybody the heads up that we're gonna be starting. Fireworks will be put on by the Kiwanis. I do know that Jesse Ferner, our new chamber director, will be doing something, being that they're not having a first Fridays uptown due to the COVID and everything. She's gonna try and do something, I think, a little bit smaller, but still something community-oriented out there at the fairgrounds. I've heard possibility of maybe some food trucks and things like that. I know she has some goodie bags, I think, to pass out for the kids and stuff like that. So just come out, enjoy the fireworks. The show should be hopefully better than last year. As I put it together this year, the shell count was better and we should have a very exciting show. And this is leading up to hopefully what'll be even a more exciting show next year that might not take place at the fairgrounds.
Just as big as Red White Moon?
I wish we had that budget.
This year, yes.
Well, yeah, but speaking of which, though, speaking to that effect, I very much appreciate we have so many businesses in this community that step up every year and they faithfully donate every year. They give me the same amount of money. Sometimes they step it up more each year. These people, as you're out in the community, all of these local businesses, and I do mean every local business in this community gives in some way, shape, or form you fireworks. Make sure you tell them thank you. Make sure you show your appreciation. Unfortunately, this year, our donations have been down. So we actually, as a club, have not even raised enough to pay for the show. So that'll come out of our club's funding to pay for the balance. But if you do have the ability to donate, please, if you have a form, donate. If you'd like to, and you don't have a form, just contact me and I would be more than glad to assist.
Does anybody have any idea of Miss Lane's business? The, the first Friday, they've been postponed. They haven't been canceled.
Cancelled.
To October something.
The first Friday's been canceled.
The whole year.
That's correct.
The only thing you'll have a something will be this July, the July third night. They're gonna do something with fireworks, kind of, but that's about it.
Is there a movie that night?
There's not because of the fireworks that we're doing at the Friday after. We don't want to be with fireworks.
Do we do those movies every Friday night?
No, usually two Fridays a month.
The last Friday, I think it was pushed back a week, right?
It was pushed back because of stage construction. So usually it was like the first and the third Friday. We're gonna do one on Tuesday this year because of festivals and fairs and that sort of thing. And just to change it up a little bit, give people different ways to do things. And in the first Friday in July, obviously, you have another fourth of July, so we wanted to do that, so.
Um, any other last new business or new business? Um, Bruce texted in, he said he was sick tonight or something, so, uh, need motion, excuse him.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Point regular meetings. Oh, are we gonna have vacancy orders this Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom, you want to go ahead with the referral?
Yeah, go ahead.
We've got four new referrals. We have the update of the city's floodplain ordinance from the law director of finance that is run for this Thursday. We have the CARES Act or a state bill three ten from the law director of finance. We have a resolution supporting the police department from Council of Health and Safety. We have a resolution accepting the safer grant of Council of Finance, already in committee and on the agenda for Friday. We have the insurance committee, the water rates regarding landlords and tenants, that is in service, that will be on Thursday. We have the vacant building ordinance and Health and Safety. And we have for the ad hoc committee on council rules, I was told I will have an updated draft on the chapters, county chapters, well, eleven, one thirteen regarding council rules. So those three existing items will be on Thursday. Anything else?
So we'll have to put out media notice for the.
If I get that drafted, that's what I should have.
Uh, I did have a land property owner contact me and said that, hey, I seen that vacant building thing came back up. They said that, I guess whenever it was brought up last time, they talked about council and said that they would be notified by that council member again if it's brought up again. They said they weren't. So if anybody has told anybody that they will be letting them know, make sure you let them know. That's gonna be discussed on Thursday. Need motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We're adjourned at seven fifty-eight.
Dead time.